Good evening, I'd like to call the Dover Select Board Meeting to order on Tuesday, January 18th at 6:30 PM. Public comments? Agenda changes? I have, I have one agenda change.
I would just ask Tracy to repeat what she said before the meeting opened.
Okay, Tracy, could you repeat about the vaccination and testing clinic?
Absolutely, there'll be a vaccination, COVID vaccination and booster clinic at the Mount Snow parking lot in the D lot, which is right as you're coming in, and there's a move or stop that's right, right there as well, as well as testing. So the testing site, you do need to register for and make an appointment. And I can send that to, I can send the link to Jeanette, I think, to put, include in the minutes if that's helpful.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Great, thank you Tracy. Um, I need to add, under new business, a router purchase from town office. It's failing, so I'll put that as D. Okay, anything else from anybody? And hi Dan, I see you there.
I'm here.
Good. Alright, alright, hearing nothing else, moving on to the unfinished business. Our first thing is to consider postponing town meeting date. The governor did sign the emergency order, allowing us to postpone to a later date. Comments?
Yes.
Joe? Dan? Public? Andy?
So, um, I agree that we should postpone. And I, I would love if, if you guys were able to say tonight that you would postpone it a month, or perhaps two, so that we can plan. The warning would need to be posted this Friday, signatures need to be in the 24, the town report, reports need to be in tomorrow, if you, so all these planning pieces depend on when town meetings. So if you can give me an idea, whatever you're comfortable with, either, you know, last year we had it May 18th, so a little over two months, we delayed it. If you could give me an idea, one month, two months, I'll know when to come back and revisit when, when those due dates might, might, uh, we might be looking out for that.
Okay, anybody else before the board responds? Yes, Tabby?
Um, I think postponing would be very advantageous for everyone, a possible, that question would be location, would we repeat last year's location, would we still be at the, you know, when we do town hall, or do we make that decision later as things turn?
So I agree, we should postpone, um, I want, I feel that the town deserves an in-person meeting. I think the discussion is, is really important, so that we can explain what's going on, and people have a chance to view, put out their own viewpoints. So I'd like to postpone it, I think that moving it to May like we did last year gives us an opportunity to make decisions about the location. Um, if, if the surge ends, we might be able to do it at the town hall. It was wonderful at Corinthia, I don't know if Mount Snow would entertain that again. Um, but that, it gives us, Tracy's shaking her head. We would, um, we don't have to actually make the, the location decision today, last year we had a committee that kind of worked on it, and maybe that's what we should do this year, and, you know, ask them to report back to us in a month, and maybe then, that would be so sometime around the first of, of March, and then we could make a decision and get it scheduled for a location. Does that seem fair? Andy, I know you want to be on that committee.
Sure.
Sarah was last year.
I would just suggest that since you did all the work last year, and we have an offer for Mount Snow, and we have the town hall, that we basically are going to make it one or the other. And that I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel.
Okay, so Sarah, Andy, um, why don't you concur and bring it back to us? We have a meeting, if we're not going to have town meeting on the first Tuesday of March, we will have a select board meeting. Does that seem fair?
Perfect.
Everybody agreement with that?
Great.
Okay.
So are we looking at May then?
I think we are, we, that would be, that gives us more options because by then, lots of times you can have the doors open and windows open, like we did last year. Thank you Tracy for offering up Corinthia, we do appreciate it.
Very much.
Alright, also, do we want to finalize the budget tonight? Or do we want to postpone that? We do not now have to, have, have to...
We don't have to have it in.
We don't have to have the, the budget done tonight, so are the reasons why we want to postpone it? Or just do it? I think we have a few moving parts still.
I was just going to say, since we don't know what North Branch fees are yet.
Well, they're in the budget, she said.
I thought they said, I thought they said it was kind of a moving target stuff, because the, the dollar amount per gallon is various.
Yes, Jeanette?
That's true, and, but we won't know, they don't know what the gallonage price is going to be before they send the bills out, so I think it's, we can only guess from, based on what they're, I think we put it in as $20 per gallon.
Can't be $20 per gallon, it's going to be like 2 cents per gallon, because
Per thousand, yeah.
Or per building. So I think that's a typo in the description in the newest version of the budget, because I figured it out, it had to be 2 cents per gallon. Or is it $20 per
Per 1000.
Thousand gallons?
Yes.
So that wasn't really clear in the, um, the little memo, there's not much space there anyway, but yeah, it's not a huge number.
No, it's, it's not a big number.
So since we're going to postpone town meeting to May, how about if we also, that same, March 1 meeting, plan to have the vote to finalize the budget, does that work in the correct timeline?
So, uh, we need to warn no later than 30 days prior. So March 1st, March, yeah, that works, yep.
Does that seem like a fair timeline? Gives us a, the month of February to finish tweaking the budget?
Oh, about better numbers. So, or stuff.
But it's the same sewer figure for all three buildings.
Yeah, because we don't know gallonage. So let's, if everybody's in agreement, we'll postpone and revisit the budget with the hopes of passing it on March 1st. Okay? Alright, so I think that we'll probably pass over the town meeting warning and do it that night too, so have it all, try to vet the whole thing on March 1st. But that's alright. Because we don't know the exact figures, so we can't really do it. So, March 1st, and that should give everybody plenty of time to get it. Okay, very good, thanks, thanks for shaking your head, yes, man. Alright, we're moving on to new business. Consider applying for flood resilience community fund grant in regard to the study on Snow Lake Dam. Tracy has asked for this to be on the agenda, and she and I spoke briefly about it.
Yes, thank you, um, and we've got Robert Wildley here with VHB to talk about the proposal that we'd like the, the Select Board to commit it to, to consider, so I'll just turn it over to Robert to talk about it.
Alright, thank you Tracy. Yep, Robert Wildley from VHB, we work with Mount Snow on a variety of sort of engineering and environmental services, and they asked us to take a look at this for the Snow Lake Dam and South Access Road. And I'm going to try sharing my screen if that works, I've got a small PowerPoint. Nope, I guess I cannot do that. Alright, let me know, let me know when to go.
Uh, can you try it now, please?
Sure. There we go.
There we go. Thank you.
Okay. So, correct, it's the Flood Resilient Communities Fund and South Access Road or Snow Lake Dam, depending on how you want to slice it. And can I advance my screen? There we go. So just a quick overview of what I've got in here, the, a little bit about the fund itself and the application process. The North Branch Deerfield River, which obviously is the incoming water into Snow Lake and then goes under the South Access Road. A replacement culvert design to change how the water leaves the Snow Lake area, the application materials and timeline, and then if we have a little bit of discussion there. So the Flood Resilient Communities Fund is part of the American Rescue Plan Act or HARPA funding that's been allocated, and $4.6 million is available, so it's a pretty good chunk of funding. The obligation date goes out into 2024, 2026, so there's time to apply for this money and spend it, but the current round of application, current round of funding is due on January 31st, so we're a little bit on a short timeline here. I'm not sure if everyone else is getting feedback, if that was me or somebody.
Hold on one second, could you, hold on. Thanks Jim, I think we're all set now.
Okay, okay, so this is administered by the Department of Public Safety because it has to do with flood resiliency, floodplain coordination, and so a little bit different than some of the other grants that you might be getting from the highway, you know, V-Trans, or the Municipal Assistance Bureau, if you've dealt with those grants in the past. But basically, they're looking for projects that have a flood resilience or reducing the flood risk as a way to protect the town, protect investments. So, these four bullets here are directly out of the, the application material, greater floodplain storage, and so if you think about Snow Lake and the water that's impounded there is essentially dead storage, and if you were to remove Snow Lake and change how that North Branch Deerfield flows through that site, you'd regain that flood storage. Number two, allowing for additional movement in natural channel design, and for the river to have a little more flexibility in where it goes. That kind of goes in the, the floodplain model of, you know, why does the river need that much space? Not just for the depth of flood flows, but also the lateral ability to move back and forth. Number three, establishing the riparian vegetation and functions, essentially providing that habitat value, the shading value, and the nutrient management side of things that we get when we have a healthy riparian buffer, and then improving filtration of floodwaters, whenever you have that, you know, storm surge come up, anything that's floating and in the water can settle out on the floodplain and, and not be going downstream. The other component to this beyond the flood risk and flood mitigation side is having a water quality benefit, and so some of these are very much aligned to the things I've already been describing. I'll just direct your attention to number two there, the dam removal projects that also reduce flood risk, pretty much ties directly to what we're talking about here. We wouldn't be proposing to remove the South Access Road itself, but changing the structure that's in place where the river passes through. As far as North Branch Deerfield River goes, you may be aware of the stormwater impairment that the river was identified having for a number of years, that, that particular impairment was recently removed from the 303D list or the federal list, that's the DEC manages and submits EPA for water quality. But they did identify that there are still thermal impacts, and so if you think about having a cold, cold water mountain stream coming off of the hill, going into a large open body of water like the reservoir at Snow Lake, you end up with heating that occurs, and so all summer long it's sitting there without any shade. And then that creates problems for the aquatic organisms downstream, fish and other organisms that have higher oxygen demand, and the warm water doesn't hold as much oxygen, so removing that online impoundment has been a goal of the DEC and the Corps of Engineers and a number of other folks that are concerned about water quality for a long time. So again, in terms of how this project fits the categories for this grant application, I think we have a good story to tell here. Just in case you were wondering where we are, this is an aerial shot from 2020, and you can see, I don't know if my, does my pointer work if I'm moving my cursor, or is that? Yeah, great. Okay, so here's South Access Road coming across the south side, and basically the roadway embankment is the berm that impounds Snow Lake. There's an outlet control structure, which is basically a concrete square, and I've got a few pictures here. The water flows overtopping that and then goes through a six-foot diameter culvert, and then there's a series of four smaller culverts that act as overflow spillway. And so the, the project would basically be to take out that existing infrastructure and replace it with a single larger culvert that matches the bank full width of the channel, which is about 20 to 24 feet, so much, you know, one single structure that does a much better job of conveying the whole flow of the river, the continuity from upstream to downstream for both water and sediment, which is actually an important aspect in river management. And then we'd be doing work upstream of this to really make a good connection between the upstream part of the channel where it comes under Handle Road, and then through the reservoir bottom to the structure, so that would all kind of be tied in. But what we're looking at for this is really the the connection to the town and town ownership of the road being an important linkage in this whole process. You know, we can do, Mount Snow can do design and, and work up in the reservoir, but because the town owns the road, that structure is, is really the linchpin to the whole project. As I mentioned, here's the concrete spillway, the existing overflow structure that conveys water downstream, there are some low-level outlets that do let, you know, daily flows through, conservation flows out, even when this is not overtopping. But those flashboards, wooden flashboards on the far side can be removed, and this structure can be removed. Another view, looking to the east, there are the four overflow structures, the they're four and a half, 4.8 feet by three and a half feet tall. All of this infrastructure dates back like the 19, around 1960 or thereabouts. It's been maintained and updated somewhat, but for the, for the most part, it's all original to that initial construction, so it's, it's at or near the end of its useful life in that, in that regard. Different season, but the downstream side of those culverts, again, you've got a system where you're taking the flow that should be 20 to 24 feet wide and breaking it up into smaller channels, which you have this additional side channel coming in here due to the overflow culverts, and then the main channels there are sort of in the background of that picture, the, the six-foot diameter culvert. So essentially this whole area would get one larger structure in place that would pass the river through that area. And then here's just a view downstream, you can see this from the top of the roadway embankment, so you can see kind of how a larger structure really would fit better in the landscape there and provide aquatic organism passage and flood flow benefits. Looking back in 2011, there is a Mount Snow master plan which had this drawing as one of the findings that was submitted with Act 250 permit. So there was some preliminary design that was done, that Mount Snow had done, that you know, is kind of part of the long-term program of, of things that may happen up there. So you have this channel design that comes through here, and this is a little bit could be improved upon, I think. We've continued to learn about river mechanics and hydrology, but one thing that was not done in that design, and again, I'm projecting here, I think it's just because it's a town road and they didn't have you know, control over that, is basically what does the outlet structure look like that conveys the river beyond South Access Road, so this is the opportunity to sort of make that linkage and kind of put this all together. As an example, this is a larger structure, this is about a 28-foot structure and a lot taller. This is a bridge or culvert that we worked on in Rochester. One of the structures that got damaged during Irene, this was a replacement for that. But you get a sense of the kind of structure that's available in precast concrete. Obviously, a little bit taller embankment than we would have at South Access Road, and probably larger stone than you would get from the gradient that we have in North Branch Deerfield. But it's just something to put in your mind about what we might be looking for in terms of the structure, none of this has been designed yet, that's the goal of this grant, or seeking this grant, is to provide funding to do the design work and engineering that's required, so then we could then move forward beyond that to a construction, seeking construction funding. So just quickly, the application is only about a four-page application, I've got most of it filled out already. Essentially, they're asking for who, you know, who is the town, and what is the primary contact information, and then information about what the project is and how does it meet those criteria that have been identified in the application, and so that's some of the information I've already given you. Narrative describing the project, I think we can cover that. The budget, and that's essentially, how much money are you asking for? And that's looking right now about $90,000 to cover design and permitting, some geotechnical engineering, just to make sure that whatever structure you're building there is going to be stable and properly founded in terms of the abutments or stem walls or whatever kind of substructure is required. And then permitting, there is a dam safety order that would need to be issued or amended with the Vermont Department of Dam Safety, the Army Corps of Engineers, and then actually your own town floodway, floodplain ordinance would need to be reviewed and sort of met in terms of the criteria of the structure, and I think that would be fairly straightforward because you're opening up the width of that you know, structure, so it's not that you're impounding more water or impacting the floodway in a negative way. Schedule, and just again, trying to put together all the component items that we'd need to get done, it would be about a six, six to eight month process, and that's something, you know, put together a Gantt chart of all the different components, how that would work, and then some site photographs, so much of this information we've already prepared and kind of ready to go. We're looking to you tonight to discuss, you know, if the town's ready to move forward on this, and then we'd be providing these materials to the town for review and approval before they got submitted. So again, the, the due date is January 31st, so you've just got a couple weeks here. I've been in some communication with the grant administrator just to make sure we have the information lined up that they need to see and the format that they need to see it in. I'm, haven't gotten a firm commitment from her on what the date is that they would award the grant, I'm assuming it would be at least two months before we had that. And then, you know, just putting in some, some milestones into a schedule. By October, we, we should be at a good point to apply, and assuming that there's another round of grants that would be available for moving into, you know, seeking funding for construction, and so a lot of that is usually best if you're putting it out to bid over the winter, getting contractors lined up for, you know, starting work in the early summer. And I just crammed a lot of information at you, so I'm happy to take any questions or explain anything else that I went by too quickly, but let me know what you think, I'll stop sharing my screen unless anyone had questions.
I'd like to ask Trace, Tracy for clarification for everybody here tonight. So this is really, Mount Snow cannot apply for this grant.
That's correct.
And, and this is a mount, so because it abuts the town road, the town road's part of it, the town would apply, but this is really something that Mount Snow is going to use, they're going to we're not going to have to manage this, correct?
Correct.
So they just want to put everybody's mind at ease, this wasn't a big project, is there any, in that respect, what, do you foresee any costs to the town and/or resources of town, either personnel or time involved in this?
No, no, it, VHB will prepare the grant and then put it in, and then what, if we get the grant, then VHB would do the work with the grant provided by the grant funding to, to do all the engineering, so that then we're ready to move forward for the next step.
I think there would need to be, and this is not a, a lift of many hours, but there just needs to be some coordination with the town and the highway superintendent, just to make sure that they're you know, supporting the project, I think they'll need to issue a letter of authorization or support for the project to move ahead. But in terms of engineering design or planning or obtaining other permits or things, that is what the grant is going to cover.
Dan, did that just apply? Dan, can? Can you check?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, my question is obviously when you take a dam out and you make a river out of it, there'll be extra land on each side of it, because it'll be a flowing body. What's going to happen with the land around the new proposed river once the dam goes?
Tracy, do you want to answer that? It's Mount Snow's land, isn't it?
Yeah, David put his hand up.
Yeah. David. Yeah, I can, I can, I can jump in here, yep. I would just say that, you know, in our master plan that we submitted in 2010, 11, that Robert mentioned, you know, the, there was a, a part of the land on one side of the, the, the stream was kind of reserved for long-term stormwater treatment for a lot of the parking lots that currently do not have stormwater treatment. You probably noticed in the drawing, there was some expanded parking area near the, the snow barn, and if the, the overall project and master plan went all the way to fruition, there was a some housing or local housing on the opposite side of the brook, kind of toward the, what's now the Mount Snow's road garage. But those were kind of the long-term overall master plan, and still wouldn't have to go through, you know, full Act 250 submittable before final determination on what would happen with those lands on either side of the brook.
So there's no way to determine how much land would be until it happens, correct?
Yeah, we would need the engineering too, that, that Robert team is working on, and, and then after, have to review how that fits in with the current three-acre rule that wasn't in place when the master plan was done, so all that would be determined down the road. So at this point, this plan would really be to look at what needs to be done to to, to get rid of the stream impoundment there with Mount, with the Snow Lake.
Got you.
Other questions? Concerns? I don't hear anybody. So, do we want, oh, oh, Jeanette, sorry. Okay.
Kevin, Kevin Stein was.
Hey guys. Thank you, you mentioned approximately 90,000K in design work, do you have a number for the implementation fees that this would cost? That's part one of my question.
So at the, at the moment, I, am I on? Yeah, at the moment, I, I, I don't have that number right at hand, it's, it's not an insignificant number, so the construction cost for something just dealing with the structure and not looking at any of the upstream work that would be done as far as creating that channel, doing that channel work. But those concrete arch culverts, several hundred thousand dollars, couple, you know, two, two to $400,000, somewhere in that, that area. So I think the, as far as the funding of that, we'd be looking for the next round of grant funding that seems like is still going to be available, I don't think the state is going to be able to allocate and spend all of that money in the next year. So I think there will be an opportunity for another set of grant applications that we'd be using for construction, you know, to seek construction funding for that structure.
Of course, okay. There's been a lot of sediment in Snow Lake, I guess in your implementation, and in all your design work, you must have a plan to remove it, because you obviously can't just flush it down the river, is that obviously part of the, the overall design?
That would definitely be part of the overall design, that's in mentioning the Corps of Engineers and the dam safety permit, that's going to be very much part of what they're looking for in terms of the design and stabilization of the banks and stabilization of the upslope areas. There was a dredging project that happened back in two thousand eight. So obviously there's still fourteen years or thirteen years or so since that work was done of material that's come into the lake. But anytime you're doing a dam removal, the sediment management is a, is a critical item.
Yeah, would have, I would have thought so. The only other thing that occurred to me, looking at the whole situation is whether anybody ever just explored the idea of just taking Snow Lake Road, Lake Drive and circumventing the whole South Access Road crossing the North Branch on the other side of the of Snow Lake rather than the south side. Has that been explored?
Uh, that wasn't something that we were asked to look into. I, I guess there is a, there are other crossings of the North Branch Deerfield River. So certainly there are opportunities for detours or different routes. I don't know. Tracy or Dave, if you want to add on to that.
Yeah, I could probably just jump in there. You know, we, we thought that most likely that would, would, would meet with a lot of local disgruntlement because obviously to keep sports would, would find that probably less than desirable for their location. And, you know, we, we just thought that would, that might be a, you know, problematic approach, but certainly it, it could, it could be an option, but we kind of steered away from that.
Sarah, did you have a question?
I maybe really stupid, but um Kevin was bringing up the cost and the budget. Is this something that Mount Snow is paying for? Are you anticipating the town is going to pay for this?
The, what the, the construction cost? No, the, the plan, the plan, Mount Snow is playing, paying VHB to prepare the application to go in to apply for the grant on behalf of the town. The town has to approve it.
Sarah's asking to actually get beyond the grant to do the, the, basically the, the design, the the construction of removing and rerouting the North Branch and taking out Snow Lake and the Arch Culverts. Who's going to pay for that? And you're hoping to get some grant money. But there's no charges to the town for that. That's what I was, we were trying to clarify.
Well, we're not to that point yet. So I don't know that that needs to be discussed today. Because right now we're, we don't even have a plan that we could, we could enact, right? So, so, and I think we, we would come back to the town again because the town owns the land, which means that the whole dam essentially, right? So if any of the work has to be done, we've got to work through this together. And so that's what we would like to do. And, and that's why, you know, we're paying right now for VHB to do the consulting work to apply for, to see what we need to do for the future that helps out all, all of our rivers stay better.
Well, I have one question. Um, we once received a grant to do some work with the water shed in Aquifer. We did not implement anything and we had to pay the grant money back and it was a lot of money. So is this that kind of grant that if it, because our name is on it? So if it's that kind of grant and this doesn't happen within a certain timeframe, is there a liability for the town to have to pay the grant money back?
Good question. Robert, do you know, have you looked over that?
I can verify, I can double check into that, but the, the work that the grant is proposing to pay for would be the engineering design for the structure. So that is going to be, that work would be completed and it doesn't necessarily say that you have to build that structure or something else could come along. But I can, in talking with the grant administrator, find that out and just confirm that that's, that's the case.
I think that would be important for us. Any other questions? Scott?
I know we're not at the point where this is just the exploratory stage or whatever, seeing if we can get the plan in place. But if you we get this grant, you move forward, you put the ninety thousand in. From what you just said, is the next grant you're looking for not part of like the building or is it? Do you think the next power would be fully funded? Are we looking like?
So, so there are other Municipal Assistance Bureau, that's a Vtrans program, Municipal Assistance Bureau funds for a structure replacement. And so something like a town-owned road with a town-owned culvert, town-owned, in this case, a dam may be able to get funding through that venue as well as, you know, something like this, this is through the, the floodplain program. So there are a couple of different sort of vehicles to get funding for the structure replacement. And I like, like Tracy said, I just, we're not quite at the point where we have a plan where we can shop it around and say, you know, does this fit your grant proposal or does this fit your, you know, how do we shop it before we have that plan in place to, to review, to have someone review and say, yes, that meets our criteria. But there are, you know, all the other town, town bridges and culvert projects. You'll find different ways to get those paid for. Some of them require matching funds. Some of them don't. This particular grant for the design does not have a matching fund component.
Thank you. So I think that this is an opportunity to get some money to do the engineering and figure this out. Because this has obviously been something that has been a lot of people have known about. It has been part of the master plan. I just want to make sure that there's no liability to the town on this whatsoever. And so I know the timeline is getting very short in terms of making the application. So I would make, I would want to make a motion that made it completely contingent on no liability to the town for repaying any of this grant if we do get it, if, if something doesn't happen and it isn't implemented. That seems fair.
Yeah, that seems, it seems reasonable. I would just ask that, that, you know, because the time is short and, and we have to have this submitted by the end of the month. So if we were to find and communicate back with you in the next couple of days, that this does not obligate construction of any sort, it's only to fund the, the engineering of what would be done. Could we assume that the board would approve this to me moved ahead so that we can move on? Otherwise, I think, you know, we'd have to wait for the next meeting and that would put us beyond the deadline.
So the motion could read something along the lines of move to, wow, okay, well, I'm just trying to figure it out. Okay, so that the, the motion would, I'm not making the motion yet. I'm just that the town of Dover will apply for the Flood Resilience Community Fund grant in regard to a study on Snow Lake Dam contingent upon confirmation that said grant will not obligate the town financially.
That sounds correct.
So, so that's not my motion. Sarah just made that motion, Jeanette. Now it's my motion. Joe just seconded it. Do you need to try to say that again? Or can you, you can watch the tape?
No, I'll listen to it. Again.
John, take.
I could say it real slow.
No, it's fine.
Okay.
Steve, you're going to get back to us in the next couple of days to Jeanette and then Jeanette will let us know that you have some sort of we'd like it not just in writing, but something in print that you can show us or in any of the application or something would be great.
A document from the
Some sort of document or whatever to help us. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion before we vote? Hearing none? All in favor of moving forward with the motion? All right, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Under new business as well, consider the email from Judy King. And this is not really, she, this is not correct. It's not Cooper Hill Holland Road. She wants a sign that says Valley View up on top of Cooper Hill by Rice Hill, Cooper Hill, Valley View. Because she sent a clarification on that. Travis?
Is Travis there?
Yes, Travis is here.
Oh, okay. I can't see him. All right.
Trying to figure this out too. Have something made up. But I was going to do it after we grind that section and get it repaved. Cause that's what's due to be finished up this spring. So yes, I do plan on doing something because where Cooper Hill ends, Valley View continues, there's no marking. She's correct. I mean, there's one for Cooper Hill, one for Rice Hill, but nothing that says Valley View starts here and Cooper Hill ends here. So yeah, we'll figure out something.
Excellent. So that, that, that should get done sometime this coming
Yeah, this spring when they, when they come and grind and get the payment done. Yes, we'll get it.
Any comments about this?
I agree.
Yep. Okay, great. Well, we look forward to seeing that. The last new business is consider a response to SOVTA's concern about the Dover Town Forest Parking Area. Okay, so SOVTA and our parent organizations VMBA and CTA are requesting a public on-the-record conversation concerning the unauthorized start of, to the Dover Town Forest Parking Lot Project and a resolution. As far as I know, some trees were cut in Era. We're not going to replant them. So I don't know what the resolution is besides that, but we're aware of it. A mistake was made. I don't think that we need to go into, no, I think we're good. Yes?
The Southern Vermont Trails Association on behalf of Vermont Bound Light Association and Catamount Trails Association is looking for clarification on this process in asking about the fact that a project was started without approval of the town's process through economic development or through a partner with Southern Vermont Trails Association. This project has a grant that was a dual signed grant both by the town and by Southern Vermont Trails Association. Our fear in that the town allowing for a town member, or sorry, not member, employee who authorized the project to continue is that future actions of authorization that could jeopardize a project like this actually could have legal repercussions in our Act two fifty permitting that could risk our organization's projects outside just the ones that are partnering with the town.
But I think Eric's got the whole framework for all of that set up now. I watched your, well, I know, but I, I watched your meeting from the other night. It wasn't a short meeting either. So, so it looks like that these are, these are some of the growing pains unfortunately, all of us are going to feel as we expand our recreational activities. And I think that we have it under control. And I think that these things happen. So it's, it's just part of the growing process, I think. Eric?
So prior to the completion of the Western Sampson Plan, there was no process in place, right? The, we were the Wild West of Trail Building and Oak and, and beyond. With the completion of our very expensive Trails and Recreation Master Plan, we decided that we were going to do things like put a Trails and Recreation Committee together. From there, we were going to start discussing what those processes were actually going to be. So that we were meeting the vision, goals and standards that are outlined in that plan. So the documents that I placed in front of the Trails Committee at the last meeting are specifically to outline that process so that everyone is on the same page and all of those decisions are coming first through economic development, through trails and through the select board. This process is in no way, shape or form intended to extend the amount of time to complete a project, but it's to meet those standards, right? It's, it's to make sure that everybody's playing on the same okay? This particular incident, you know, I was informed by SOVTA that the project was started. I had a conversation with Andy who had made the call to start it. He shut it down immediately. He sent an email to our select board, myself, and I, I don't remember who else was copied on the email stating that it was in state, that the, you know, that he didn't realize we weren't ready to move forward with the project. You know, again, all of the select board members received that. I had a personal conversation with Andy basically stating that any of these decisions on these projects moving forward would be coming out of my office. So as far as the resolution you're seeking, that, that should cover it. Okay. That is information that I did share with SOVTA. There was still the request to bring it to this public forum. I I appreciate that if you, if, if it needs to happen here. But the, the conversation has been had. Those, those decisions will be coming out of my office. And as soon as we can come to an agreeance on the actual framework of those process documents, they will be implemented and everybody will be helped with that. That being said, with the cutting of those trees, you know, there was a, we did receive confirmation confirmation from the state that there were no, you know, we did not infringe on any Act two fifty structure up at the town forest. And then we actually submitted the PRS that was written for the LOI and received our answer in a week and a half that, you know, we don't need the Act two fifty to move forward up there. I did receive confirmation today that they are still reviewing the Ursa Grant documents, which was supposed to be completed in December. That's not done yet. They're hoping for an early February announcement. Whether or not we receive that grant, we will be moving forward with the expansion of the parking lot as well as the memoriam for Phil Wabla, June or senior, senior?
No, not, just Phil.
Sorry, up in the town forest. So, you know, in my mind, with that, you know, with that signed PRS from the state, because this was already an approved project, it will be moving into the process documents that we're working on, the referred to approved project. That's, that's my explanation of, of what happened and what the resolution from our Economic Development Department looks at that.
Yeah, thank you. We, the organization certainly appreciates that the process goes directly through economic development. We think that is the appropriate decision, that the plans and actions are authorized through that. So we appreciate that. And we also do appreciate the processes that are being proposed and that are being communicated to the Trails Committee. Because we, we do think that that is great to have that involvement and it's going to be nice to have a really clear documentation on how the town and partnering organizations work together. And we think that that's fantastic. And just acknowledge that this request from our parent organizations came prior to that meeting. So while this might seem a little unnecessary, it's all in its due process and we appreciate that resolution.
Good.
And just to be clear, the, the decisions do not come through economic development. All final decisions land on this board and are enacted.
So technically they come through you, but they don't stop at you. Travis, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, there's, there's another part of this that involves me and
No, I, no, we're not, no, we're not going there.
Okay.
We're good. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. We're going to move on to economic development. We're going to change the appointment of the, to the Dover Trails Committee and the Rec Committee for the Dover Stump Jumpers. I mean, Deerfield Valley Stump Jumpers.
So you guys may remember a few months ago when SOVTA wanted to change the chair or the seat in their chair on the committee. It's part of the bylaws that the recommendation from that organization comes to you guys when you make the appointment. So here's what I saw. Some jumpers would like to place Matt Nicholas on the Dover Trails Recreation Committee in the place of Paul Fisher, who has stepped down. So I just need a motion and a vote to place Matt Nicholas on the Dover Trails Recreation.
I make a motion that we appoint Matt Nicholas to be Deerfield Valley Stump Jumper's seat on the Trails and Recreation Committee.
Scott seconded it first. Sorry, Dan. Any question? Does, does Matt Nicholas live in town? Just curious. Just curious. Paul? Do you know if Matt Nicholas lives in town?
Hey folks, I'm here. Yeah, Matt does live in Dover. He lives in Westover.
Thank you very much. Thank you for serving on that committee.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, any other discussion? All in favor? And the next thing is the Dover Technical Assistance Program, which, um. We have already reviewed the economic development budget, so this is an addition of a program that. Eric and the economic, and Shannon have put together, are starting to put together to help businesses, uh, with various. You wanna talk about it?
Uh, sure, so. Basically, we're just seeking to outline item, um, into the next year's budget for, to start with twenty five thousand dollars to. To implement the Dover Technical Assistance Program, basically, it's going to be a, um. It's, it's a grant to provide businesses technical assistance for the things that are most commonly asked for, uh, here in the Economic Development Office. Including but not limited to staffing, bookkeeping, um, business plan, marketing, plan assistance. Uh, web development, business granting assistance, property design and expansion design projects and point of sale upgrades and communication. Um, basically, through this plan, uh, for-profit businesses in the town of Dover could apply. To receive up to seventy-five percent for a total grant amount of twenty-five hundred dollars. To go to a third-party, uh, organization to help them with any one of these issues. So, uh, an example, an outside staffing firm or web design firm or bookkeeping or education or bookkeeping. Uh, things along those lines. Uh, in order to keep the same businesses from using the program year after year and trying to spread the, um, the money around a little bit. We would set it so that if you were approved for a grant, you would not be allowed to apply for the grant for another two years. Um, so it's not the next year, but the following year you could apply again. And you could not apply for the grant for the same category that you ordered the grant the first time. So obviously, there's a lot of moving parts to this grant. Um, and a lot of, um, information that would need to be put together in terms of application and guidelines and things like that. What I'm asking for tonight is just that we add that twenty-five thousand dollar line item to the budget. So that we can then move forward with putting all of those documents together and having those to you, you know, late spring, early summer. So that by the, we can get those approved and when the new fiscal year hits, we can, we can start implementing the program anyway.
Scott? That, so. If like, there are ten people that could receive this grant?
If they're all for max grants, yes.
Okay.
But my idea here was starting with the twenty-five thousand dollars to see what the interest is in the grant in the first place. Um, and then, you know, if we, if we see the need or want that I'm expecting, we can then the following year discuss. You know, expanding on it or, or modifying it to.
Joe, I know you got something to say. So I think my point it, it would be that as we move forward with a new program like that. That you start a database for everybody so that we, it's easy to say, oh no, that guy already applied for that one, so we can't do that one again. Because the, the tracking of this is much more, I mean, I wish we had that to do it, I really do. Because sometimes it's like, uh, that kind of, it's hard to go back and, and remember, oh, well, we bought windows for that place ten years ago. Or whatever, you know.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of record keeping, we would probably know that now. It's just that we, we haven't put that into a specific database, but it's absolutely no problem to do that.
I think it would help everybody. And you guys will flush all that out. I mean, we're not spending the money tonight. We're just saying, there's a potential that this program. Uh, might be able to be in place for next fiscal year and we'll see what, you know, what the guidelines are. So basically, it's just.
And we're just, we're giving him permission to add it to his budget, cause we can vote it on the budget.
We don't vote on the economic development budget usually. We just look at it and, um, basically give it our blessing. Um, so, Dan, do you have anything to say about that?
Michael?
I agree with the database. We'll find out what happens and, uh, our economic development team is pretty sharp on, uh. Not giving money out to people more than once.
And now Joe, do, do you have something more to say? No comment?
Comments are welcome, I mean, especially as I go onto the planning point if there's something. Feel free to reach out to me personally.
It's just, it's just a very. Wide net we're casting, so it's.
Okay, I mean.
Which is good. I'm not, I'm not saying, I just, I just, you know, the ultimate goal is to help out with Dover businesses, so that's, that's fine. So it could be a Dover business that doesn't, operates in town, but it could be an online thing. So there's no, there's no, not bringing people here. It's, uh, it could be anything.
What if there's some?
It could be, uh, whatever business, but technically the people that I'm servicing are outside of Dover. I just happen to operate there. So do I have to have?
Uh, so he's talking like maybe no hedge funds or anything like?
No, I, I understand.
That's what I'm saying, so that's what I say, you should have a large net, maybe casting out there, just, you know.
Right, this is, this is a very.
So you have a little more.
This is a very bird's eye view of what it is that we're talking about. As these documents come together, we can take a look at those and say, no, we think we should not maybe include this type of business. So, or, you know, like, we can, we can cross those, right? This is literally just to get that line item into the budget so that we can be tracking it separately from the.
It's just a huge net, that's all, scares me.
Sarah?
And I would just say that i- if it starts as a huge net, perhaps, that is allows you to collect a lot of data. Which then allows it to be refined in an intelligent way instead of just a random.
I mean, I mean realistically, all of our programs, when they started, were a very huge net and have, and have shrunk down. I mean, the advertising program was paying for books and coffee mugs back in the day, like we've. We brought that back in so that now it's going through the things that actually. Work for the advertising. So I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I definitely assure you that I'm not trying to just.
Do you have time in your department to manage another?
Absolutely.
Okay, I ju, I think that that, I mean, it seems.
That's, you, that's what we're here to do, right? It's to put these things together, like, once they're implemented, they. Just like do it, it's, it's that one section of the year and then we.
Go and do, go and do your other things.
They all just work together, right?
It's not a week by week.
After this one, there will probably be another, you know, like, that's why we're.
Okay. Yes?
You could also implement a time limit, like, some new business coming in, they have to be here like two years before they can apply for this. To prevent people from just jumping in and trying to get money.
So these are all good pieces of the board's throwing out, so just food for thought as you put the program together. Does anybody have any concerns about? About adding this to the economic development budget, which we all know is fluid. It's not set in stone. Things change, things move, things don't happen, things do happen, so.
I'm happy with it.
I'm good with it.
Alright, off you go with that then. Thank you, Eric. Anything else for economic development?
No, but we skipped over router.
Sorry, that's my bad. So we have a, a failing router and it's gonna be very expensive. It's about nine hundred and fifteen dollars. And, um, I, as I said, you know, Tabby wants to say it's okay if she needs to buy this router. Uh, from our home, that we can purchase the router. We, as I said to her earlier before the meeting.
Thank you, buy the router.
Thank you. When, uh, these things happen and you call them in and they say, oh no, you gotta do this, or you're not gonna have any internet, guess what? It gets done. I appreciate this, um, but, uh. You have, you have to have it. So you have the board's blessing, I believe. Dan, you okay with that?
I'm good with it.
Alright, thank you for reminding. Uh, consent agenda is, um. Uh, approve the minutes from January four?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of January fourth.
Any changes, corrections? All in favor?
I abstain.
Dan abstained, she was not here. We have the warrants for January eighth, which Jeanette emailed to everybody. Last week, um. For two hundred twenty-eight thousand, three hundred eighty dollars and fifty-two cents.
I make a motion that we approve the warrants of January eighth for two hundred twenty-eight thousand, three hundred eighty dollars and fifty-two cents.
Second?
Second? Any discussion? Uh, I was just, uh, I questioned the bill for the Monument Plaque Company. Um, for the Stoyan Cristo thing that happened two years ago. We finally just got the bill. And it was about thirty-two hundred dollars to fix that. Um, it was run into by a truck. It's right out front here. So, um, that's what it was. I guess it got delayed because of the whole COVID thing and, um, so finally, uh, they have. The, the bill is dated twenty-twenty. So.
Thing we're still in business.
Okay, all in favor, did we vote on that? All in favor, no?
No.
All in favor? No, we didn't, we did.
Did you make a mo, oh, sorry.
I made a motion.
Oh, you did, okay. Okay.
All in favor? Um, then we have FYIs. The meter installations in the police department, the fire department, the Westover Fire Department. The town office are due to happen on January twentieth. So that we can mirror water. The Planning Commission is meeting January twenty-fourth at six-thirty PM. And the Trails and Rec meeting meet Feb- February eighth at six-thirty PM. Anybody have any other FYIs? Uh, liaison reports? No. We're gonna have an executive session with, for personnel with Linda Sherman. Uh, Tabby, can you hang around to come back?
Absolutely.
Turn this off, so thank you all for coming. Travis?
Jeanette's a parliamentarian.
Officially thanking Travis and the road crew for their outstanding work in the last round.
Yes.
Thank you. Yes.
I drove on other roads.
Thank you. Um, so I'd like to entertain a motion to go in an executive session at seven thirty-three.
So move.
Do I have a second? Uh, we are coming out of executive session, uh, with, under unanimous consent at seven forty-nine. And we have continued, finished our discussions with Linda Sherman concerning, uh, compensation. And I was adjourning the meeting at seven fifty.